We have people missing because of sugar beets getting things out of the field before Wednesday, when they won't be able to. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Raleigh?
Take all the baby.
Raleigh? I heard this way.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And there's nobody here from the public that would like to speak. So we will move on to the activities director's report.
I will be very brief. MDE report, athletic report was taken care of, that was a couple weeks ago, we got that in as far as submitting our activity count plus the dollars spent on boys versus girls kind of to make sure that we're where we need to be and we are as far as what we offer and the number of coaches and things like that. Right now from fall sports, the only thing we still have going is football. Thursday night, we're in the Dome versus Perm for the championship. Winner of that game will play the following Saturday at Alexandria at 12 o'clock. So if we win, we would get to go to Alex the following week. Girls lost in volleyball to the number one Seapark Rapids, that was 3-0. In cross country, we had a couple kids that were three seconds away from qualifying to go to state. So we're all done in cross country and volleyball and then football, we still go on Thursday. Middle school numbers, ending volleyball, they kick off with basketball right away. Numbers are strong, we have enough for four teams. Dance kicks off on, kicks off on the 21st, we've got new unis coming for them. So they were happy with that. And other than that, activities council, I'm dragging my feet a little bit just to wait to see what happens on November 5th and then that will kind of guide the agenda from there. So.
No, I haven't got to go to a meeting yet, so looking forward to it.
You missed an hour. It's a, it's a kiss. So other than that, that's kind of where we're in that lull before ending fall, starting winter and we got obviously a lot of things coming up, so.
So now that the Booster Club is no more, how, what's your plan as far as a banquet or something that would recognize?
So for a number of years, the coaches have wanted to do their own anyway. So each individual coach, a lot of schools do it that way where they have their own banquets, they can set it at their own times, their own places, they won't need a community center, so to speak. When you've got larger numbers like football, they might want to still do something like that, but some smaller groups can certainly utilize a media center or something like that if it's just an awards banquet or the theater or something like that. So they're well aware, I don't, I haven't heard yet what each one is planning on doing, but I know they've talked about it in the past that they'll kind of keep it separate and kind of do their own thing.
Probably a lot faster.
Yeah, and see more of a focus on that particular sport. Now if something comes up where we get it back, you know, we can look, but until then, I think that's the plan, just to make sure they still have their end of the year celebration, they'll kind of go solo. And then money wise, we're actually sitting pretty well with our activity accounts and things like that where they have opportunities to make money. And so as far as needing things, you know, the Booster Club is great, but we've been able to, I think we're going to be able to sustain that and still get the things that we, those other ticket items that we typically don't get through through the school, we're still able to get those things, provided it falls within the parameters of the student activity account, of course. So we're okay as of now, we're okay.
Alright, does anybody have any questions? David? Okay, thank you. Alright, community ed report.
Mine will be short, I just be mindful of time. Each one is just a little packet there. Maybe I'll let you take a packet and just pass it around, you got one packet there, yeah.
I think you got two now, hon.
Yeah.
Alright, hand me those two.
But anyway. And the last couple maps really are just for your, for your input, nothing has been done with them, so I'll just preface that when we get down to the third item on the topics. I'll just speak for eighth, um, third grade through eighth grade community ed basketball, we have 22 teams out this year, so it's quite busy with that. That started, we had our first game on Saturday, so kids are enjoying it and tonight, we have picture night for all the teams, so I might bounce back out to kind of make sure that's running smoothly. Four-on-four volleyball started on Sunday night, so we have that going on for five weeks and drivers ed, the fall session will wrap up this, this week. Park Avenue, just a little update on that, we have been communicating with students, parents, staff, kind of the update throughout the summer. You'll see that now we have up the no parking on school day signs from seven to four on the east side and the west side of Park. Brian and myself have attended city council meetings in Glendon and worked with the county and just to kind of figure out a plan of how we're going to do with the busing because with the new road design, they've taken out the staff parking for GFE Elementary and the normal drop-off by door one for where the special ed would always come in. So now everybody is coming around the back. You have the buses, you have deliveries, you have staff, you have a lot more traffic. So after a lot of conversation and reflection on what would be best for the district, we went to the city and we talked with the county engineer and they were all in agreement that, you know, it would be a good opportunity to move the busing to the west side. Prior to even having any of those conversations, Eileen talked to each one of the contractors and the contractors were all supportive of this model. We got through the whole process and now, you know, we have one contractor who is kind of saying, "I don't know, I don't know." Eileen is just doing her reassuring that, yep, this, we will have all of our processes in place on safety and crossing guards and things like that, so that they feel that this is a good, good plan. Today, Wayne, I, Margot and Eileen met just so that when all the signs are done and before we move anything to the east side, we want to make sure the concrete is in even where those poles are missing. We would hate to have a little kid walk, get out of the bus and trip and fall and yes, they do have the poles around the caution tape, it comes down as fast as it goes up, the old kid walks by and takes it down. So before we do any moving, we would make sure that that's all done. It could be a week, it could be three weeks, we don't know. We've tried to reach out to Excel again, we haven't got a call back. But today when we met, we all went out there and we kind of looked at it and walked it from the railroad tracks where the staff were parking all the way to door 20. We will make sure that that is showing parent drop-off. If you notice this summer, when we had the bus A-frame pickup for summer rep out by the softball field or we kind of repurposed it, now we use it at concessions, we'll have a couple of those for a while out by the staff parent drop-off, so the parents know this is the zone. We'll communicate with them, we'll work with, you know, all the parents and share it all with you all before that happens. Margot and Wayne have come up with a plan on crossing guards, you know, what paras can help. It sounds like Wayne will take, take the morning and Margot will take the afternoon and we're, we're working on that. So I think, you know, overall, we're just trying to make sure that nothing, you know, is missed. The first week or so, we said we'll have some of us out there just to make sure that the students know when I get off every day, I gotta, you know, they go in this door, this door, this door, so that we, we have a plan. So we've even followed up with Cecil in the last week just to say, you know, we've visited more of contractors and things like that. So trying to just make sure the communication is, is going well. Okay? If you have any questions, you can always let us know or reach out to Brian and he'll let us know too. Referendum, we're, you know, it's gaining momentum, we're getting down to those that last week. For some of you on your way out, you probably saw that some of the ag community has wanted to do some signs. They're supportive of the referendum. Our role is a neutral role, more of an informational piece, so we get out our message and, you know, we can't really say yea or nay to what they're doing, if they're supporting it, if it's a vote yes or a vote no, that is, you know, their, their option. So you will see those, we just aren't there to, other than give information. There is this, you know, with any communication, Jake has been putting out Mondays and Thursdays, I'm just communicating all of the other, other PR pieces that I have to. We'll have another meeting this Thursday, our last meeting, 3:30 to 4:00 for staff if they want to come in and get some last minute information. The third bullet under referendum, that's what's pertaining to these maps. For some of you, if you live in Dilworth, you might know that there is a Facebook group called Dilworth Concerns, it's just the name, but it's people just putting out questions to that closed group, what are some questions on the referendum? It's amazing to see that there's several people that don't know what district they're in. So really, our overall message on this last flyer was, and I wanted your input and you can think about it, maybe if you could get back to me by morning, is that orange and gray one truly is the city of Dilworth. People literally on this group are saying, "Boy, I live on this street and this street, what, where do I vote?" So we thought that maybe when we do this last mailer, it's almost done with the exception of inserting the maps. There's two maps, one is the gray and orange one, that reflects just the city of Dilworth and what Brian's worked on for a number of years on the land swapping. And you'll see what is Dilworth, DGF district, and the orange is Morehead School district. And the other map truly is reflective of all three communities, Dilworth, Glendon and Felton. The county sent that to me today, but if you look at the top of the one that says, it's orange and gray, you will see it says polling site. To me, that's wrong. It's really the community center, it's not City Hall. So I sent them a note saying, "Can you please fix that and then get that back to me?" But thought that this would be something good to put in that last mailer so that the Dilworth residents, anybody that has a 56529 zip code would get our project costs, what the three goals are, where to vote, and here's a map on where you do vote. And then we would also put it on the webpage so that they know the residents of Glendon and Felton would get the orange and tan map on their flyer.
The purple one, you mean?
Yeah, I'm sorry, purple and tan. So unless, if you prefer we don't do that, we'll, you know, go from there, but the goal would be to get that in the mail by Wednesday, so that residents would have it Thursday through Saturday right before they vote.
I like the idea because I know that when I've gone up to the community center to vote, it seems like almost all the time, somebody will lock in and they'll go, "What do you mean I can't vote?", you know? And I'm just saying not, you know, of course not for right now, but many times if they are unaware that they can't.
No, I like that idea if it's.
You think so?
I think it is. Because if it's out there and people are not sure, you know, what district they're in, I think that this is very nice and clear and concise and they can see the roads and...
Yeah, yeah. And I'd say the last thing is, I did put that little bullet point number four, just so you have that if you're wanting to come. And, you know, as all of us were excited for November 5th and we're trying to be very clear on our district communication, but also, you know, many of us, I know, you know, we have a personal interest in this referendum, so we do our job during the day, but some of us are out there championing as much as we can, so.
I did talk to Cecil today. The lights for out in front of the school are not in yet.
Right, that's why the concrete's not in.
And yeah, Excel, they were figuring on this week, but I think something's going to happen also from ninth to 12th, is not going to get finished this year.
I think it's just going to be gravel base, yeah.
That's on park, you mean? They're just going to get it so they can only drive down?
So you can at least drive down, but that's why we keep, you know, reaching out to the Excel rep that we've talked to before and overall, they're going to pull out those poles, put in the new light poles and then they'll pave, but with the temperatures at 30, they usually won't do any gravel work right this week. So we won't do anything until we communicate to all the parents.
Just travel the maps.
Is that alright?
Yeah, they'll agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, transportation report.
And I can give that, just a, just a few things on it and I talked to Eileen today. Few updates, currently, we are transporting 10 homeless students right now. And we typically get more as we get closer to Christmas, just so you know. It is getting to that point that it's taxing our staffing that we have in transportation. Also talked with Tracy a little bit over the last few days based on some needs. We know we're shorthanded in community ed, you know, she doesn't have that assistance right now. And one thing that Tracy and I and Eileen have talked about is why not look at creating a flex position? They're in the same office, we got the needs in the afternoon. Eileen is, we have good coverage in the morning, but we do not have good coverage for after school, which is also when Tracy needs help for the things with community ed as far as getting the supplies and setups and all that. So they're working on a job description for that position and then the plan is that they would be bringing that back to operations in November, so the operations committee can see exactly what the job description would look like and then we'd be asking the board for that position at that time. So Eileen has a few other things that she has concerns with, with the routes, we're getting to that time of the year where, of course, people are using the busing more now that we get to the winter. A couple of things associated with that, you all received some correspondence from one of our daycare centers that is not located in our district. I, I corresponded with you over the weekend about, and that went, it went very well. The conversation, the understanding from the people that there's no way we can do this in the afternoon, we can't come from the east trying to get out on 34th, going to the south and try to cross 34th coming out of that. It is not something safe at all and you're not supposed to. So that, they understand that. Their hope is that in the morning, because they have to actually transport some students anywhere from three to six students over to the Dilworth site in the morning and make the timing to get that to happen, transporting some of those kids, dropping those kids off and then getting to one of Morehead sites creates an issue for them. So speaking with Eileen, route six coming from, over on Little Italy and they may go around on, coming back on 34th to make that work. It's almost a full, they're near capacity, so one of the issues is, yes, we can stop there and pick up three or four kids, however, if they start trying to advertise that, yes, there's a drop-off here and to get more people coming, that's not going to work. So it's asked to be controlled, we can only do so many kids there because we're at that capacity. And as long as they have that understanding that, yes, we can do this up to this amount, but we can't do it beyond that because we don't have the capacity to be adding for out of district stops. So we have some correspondence that we're doing regarding that. Like I said, she'll be coming in, so I think we have a good compromise with it, that we can help on that extent, but there's no way we can do the afternoon and, and like I said, the meeting, that meeting went very well. So operations can plan that Eileen will be coming back in, in November with some of those update suggestions for the route. She's got some tweaking that she thinks is going to have to happen, both, I think it's six and 12 are both very much at the capacity, are near capacity. But because six can be dropping some of the kids off at Dilworth, we're talking just a couple of miles, that they would be really at a full load and then they go straight on to Glendon, so that'll help that situation. Because one of the kids that is over at that location is a fifth grader that needs to get over to Glendon and six goes and continues there anyway. So, good solution. That's it for transportation.
Do we have any board committee reports?
No, I, I can just briefly share that Amy and I were asked to come in to Mrs. Staples' class, Mr. Sundays, to talk about being on the school board. They're doing a big government thing and so we did that this last Friday and oh my gosh, those kids were amazing, they had great questions, their hands were just up in the air. Fourth graders.
Fourth grader.
Yeah, fourth graders. So that was such a good experience and I guess Mr. Mark Ward's been in there to visit with them and I think they maybe haven't had Cecil maybe come in, I don't know, I'd have to double check. And anyway, so that was, that was a really fun experience and yeah, so that was my, that's my board committee report. That was, that was fun. So I think a lot of their questions, they wanted to know what the referendum, what the bond actually means and what we actually, how they would see things change and they thought that there was two separate boards for both sites, like there was a board for the Glendon site and Dilworth and so they had some great, great questions. It was, they were a fun group of kids, so yeah, yeah, they were very engaged, so that was cool.
Thank you.
Elementary kids are fun though.
Yeah, well, fourth grade's that just fun age, you know, nine, 10-year-olds, they're just like, "Oh, the Mr. Anderson, Craig Anderson was their sub that day because Mrs. Staples was down at a literacy conference or whatever and, and he said, you know, tell the kid, you know, tell them about your families and your kids and all the little boys were like, "You're Aiden's mom!" It was cute. It was cute.
Almost like stardom.
So yeah, it was pretty cute, but yeah, so that was this last week, so. Yeah, if anybody gets an opportunity to do that in Dilworth sometime or whatever, yeah, it worked out for my schedule and it was, I would definitely would love to do it again. It was good.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to 6.5 superintendent report.
Just a few things, because of course everything is referendum right now, but as you can see, this is the drop-off for the fill of the dome, so the students have been definitely collecting and I know they were doing a lot of dropping off over the weekend since I know they used my, our vehicle because it had more space, which was okay, they didn't ask for the Camaro. The e-learning, I had a conversation with Heidi today, that is something, again, they are, the staff is, that's their baby to take charge with and I know there were some staff members that were going to be doing some presentations to the birth to five committee in particular because high school to middle school is further ahead with plans for e-learning and we're really not going to bring this forward to the board until we have plans K through 12. And so they're going to be working on some presentations with staff and going to the site leadership teams because, you know, we have an emphasis that you need to do this through your leadership process. Get it to the site levels, get it to the birth to five levels and then the other component, let's make sure that we're getting some feedback from parents. Because this does have, we, the parents and the students, student leadership, student counselors and what else not, should have some input into this because it's their education, it's their education design, to make sure that they're thinking that this also has some substance and merit to doing. So right now, the tentative timeline is that they would bring something forward. We're being optimistic that we're not going to have much for snow days before Christmas break, but even if we do, it's not the end of the world. We won't do e-learning until after this gets approved at the state level and gets submitted to MDE. But tentative, tentative timeline would be bringing this to the board in December, so nothing before that. And all those things have to be in place before it's going to come to you guys. We are doing a lot of work administratively about, and I've talked about this a little bit, about the changes that we have to make with our utilization of our title service or interventionists. And especially assuming things go positive on the 5th, next Tuesday, how will that look as we reconfigure the district? And it, I think it's a little eye-opening when we, even for, as the admin team, as we start looking at the different pots of money that are involved with this. Because to put it in perspective, we have Title I funds, we have Title II funds, we now have Title IV funds, we have achievement integration funds, new funding stream, we have basic skills funds, we have English learner funds, we have American Indian funds, we have special ed early interventionist funds, these are all funding streams. And a goal that I've, and you've heard me talk about this many times, is I want a system in place. I don't want that we sprinkle here and we sprinkle here and the left doesn't know what the right's doing and all that, so we want to have a complete system K through 12. How are we doing interventions? How are we, how are we helping students, whether it be at the lower end or even in the gifted and talented? How are we providing programming for those students to have growth? So there's a lot of work to get this into place, but I, since I've been here, it's the first time we've had that broad of a discussion about it, so it's exciting. But that is, that is a goal coming out of this year so that as we look at how we redefine our interventionist programming for kids, that we have that already to, to lay out going into 2020, 21, so. There's lots, there's lots of money involved in this stuff. You know, there's probably, when you add up all of those figures, there's probably $500,000, $600,000 of funds, so.
So it'd be more beneficial to combine those funds?
Absolutely. Exactly. Because so many of them have a lot of the same goals, we write these reports, new funding sources come in and then we try to write, okay, where are we going to use this money for? And what happens is they become isolated silos. And this way, if we just say, "We're going to take all of those funds," what are the needs at the primary levels? And how should those look for those services? How do they change by intermediate? What are the needs at middle school? How do we utilize our ALCs at the middle school and the high schools? Those kids, we don't have dropout by the time they hit high school levels, so.
No matter where the student would qualify, your, the services would be there?
Exactly.
And cover.
That's the big change. Because how many times do we have conversations with parents that, well, so-and-so doesn't qualify for this? It shouldn't matter which one of them they qualified for.
Well, working here, the goal is the same.
Exactly. So that's why I'm excited for it because it's, it's been hard to wrap around this and I've, I've done this for a lot of years and I can honestly say, you know, when we were talking about this the one day, we haven't had those type of discussions where you look at it from that five foot, 5,000 foot level. We need to have more of those type of discussions.
And the funding stream won't say, "Nope, you have to earmark it exactly through here", do we have to do anything as far as get approval from MDE saying that, yep, this, this...
The good thing is when we write the plans, when we write the title plans, we write the title plans as such that we're using the funds for intervention services. We do the same thing for our achievement integration, the same thing. And now it's just, what are the particular clientele? Okay, some of these kids can be funded through this, nobody else has to know, it's all seamless. So the kids get their programming needs met without anybody having to know how we reported in Mars. So it's exciting and it's just a lot of work that we have to do behind the scenes to make it ready to go.
Oh, that's, that sounds very good. Question, as far as when they talked about, you've been having all the emails coming out saying that there's certain times that teachers can come and get questions answered and things like that, have they been well attended or not?
Wayne, what'd you have last Thursday? Did anybody show up? I think in the meetings combined, you know, between the three meetings, at this site, I think we've had a total of four people in three meetings. And we had two or three at Dilworth. But we offer.
Right. I was going to say, it's been offered. Okay.
Yep.
That's all we got.
Thank you. Moving on to 7.1, this is the approval of the October 15 regular meeting.
So moved.
Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rowley. Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.1, business under claims and accounts.
This time around, we have $189,811.23.
Thank you. Also in your board packet, there's the student activity funds, activity bills for the Dilworth and the Glenon Felton sites. Treasures report, Minnesota liquid asset. And there's also a resignation of Kayla Oslin, paraprofessional effective October 25. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. Any questions? Hearing no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to 9.1, this is the 19 audit. Annie, you're up.
See if we can get this going. I think it went to sleep.
Is it showing up on, on your, on your screen?
Yep. While he does that, I did hand out some hard copies too, so you do have those in front of you as well. It's the thinner bound document. So we revamped our executive summary from past years. And now it's in PowerPoint format rather than Microsoft Word format. So we have a couple of different options where we can print it out for you or you can view it electronically on the TV. My name is Derek Flanagan from Ite Bailey, here to present on the 2019 financial statement audit by using this executive summary. This has been meant to be informational. And if you have any questions or even discussionary items, please don't hesitate to interrupt me or ask questions as I'm going through it. I welcome the conversation and would love to answer any questions that you do have. Otherwise, my plan is just to walk through it page by page as I have in the past. And a lot of the information is very similar to the past, but we have made some changes. First off, you've hired us to come in and perform a financial statement audit. So this first slide is just going to go through some roles and responsibilities. The financial statements that you have in front of you, they're in our format, but they're actually your financial statements. They're the district's financial statements. You have hired us to come in and provide an opinion on those financial statements. You received a clean audit opinion in the current year. It's an unmodified opinion is the, the accounting term for it. What that means is that your financial statements are prepared in accordance with standards, they do not contain material misstatements, and that they are fairly presented. So a clean year, yay! I can see the excitement in your faces.
Easier.
That next slide, audit of federal funds. Anytime a government entity expends more than $750,000, they are required to have a separate audit of federal funds. An audit of federal funds is focused more on compliance and internal controls, whereas your financial statement audit focuses on the numbers and making sure those are accurately presented. You received an unmodified opinion on compliance for your major federal awards. That's a clean opinion for your, your federal audit as well. So that is good too. Anytime we go through an audit, we report findings as part of that audit. And I'm just going to go through those very briefly. The top there, the financial statement findings, those are the same three findings you've received for as long as I can remember. And 90% of the school districts, maybe even more, that I am involved with in audit, receive these three findings. So it's not uncommon. And what they are is you have a lack of segregation of duties, just meaning you don't have, you haven't hired 10 accounting staff to be in your, in your accounting department. It just, it wouldn't make sense to do that. It would be financially prohibitive. And so it makes it tough for you, for the, the department to segregate all the functions in order to get a proper segregation of duties. That, I, I talk about that because that makes your role that much more important to scrutinize expenses when, when they provide you with that list of expenditures. If something doesn't quite look right, just ask the question, what does this relate to? Or to get that little extra background, you're providing that, it's what I would call a compensating control. Proper financial statements, the financial statements were in our format. So anytime that we prepare the financial statements, we have to report that as a finding. And then we propose journal entries as part of our audit. And anytime we do that, we report that as a finding. Those are, like I said, are very common. We did have a student activity finding, which was expenditures within the student activities that are not allowable per the new MFA guidelines. So two years ago, the, the standard by which we have to do the student activity audit changed and the, the way that they, they publish new rules and regulations surrounding it, and they're much more stringent. So we are seeing a lot more findings across all the school districts that, that we are auditing. And as part of your audit, we did identify some disbursements in the student activity that are not allowable by those standards. As part of the federal award audit, there was one finding, and that is just that you do not have a formal procurement policy, meaning you do not have a policy that sets forth exactly the, the procedures to follow for certain dollar amounts on how you're going to obtain bids, if it's over a certain dollar amount, or if there is a certain dollar amount where you don't have to obtain bids. You have to formalize that. And if you don't formalize it, it ends up being a finding. So that'll be, you know, in order to alleviate that one going forward, that'll be an easy fix, just to, to formalize a policy. And then we do a Minnesota legal compliance audit, and there were no findings as part of that. So that is a summary of the audit findings. Now we're going to get into financial information. The first graph is a pretty simple graph. It's your cash and investment position, but it has 10 years of information. And what I would point out about 2012 and 2013 and prior is that is when, I don't know how many were on the board at that time, but if you were, you will, you will remember this, that the state was withholding a larger percentage of your gen ed aid as of year end. Now, you ultimately got it, but you're having to wait longer for a larger dollar amount. The ratio back then was as low as 60 to 40 in 2012, meaning they paid 60% of your entitlement in the year of, of those students, and then 40% of it came after year end. So that put districts in a very tough cash flow position. A lot of districts had to take out aid anticipation and short-term borrowings to make sure they had the cash flow they needed. Now, from 2014 all the way now to 2019, that ratio is 90-10. It's your only way as of year end. It is never exact, but it's roughly that 10% every year that you're waiting on. And I haven't heard anything to the contrary going forward either, so. Some analysis on the general fund. Your ADM serves, so your student count, your funding is primarily, you know, your, your student count is one of the biggest drivers of your funding throughout the school district. So this is obviously another very basic graph, but just to show you the 10-year history and the trend analysis of your student counts. A decrease in 2019 was the first decrease in a number of years. Now getting into the, the finances of the general fund. There's a lot of information on this page. I focus in on the far right two columns. The third column is the actual four-year general fund, actual dollar amounts. And then the far right is the variance of that actual with your final budget that you had set. So revenues were 4% positive variance, positive on the revenues, meaning you did receive more than you had anticipated. Expenditures was a negative 1.3% variance. Negative on the expenditures means that you did spend more than you had anticipated with your final budget. Ultimately, your net change in fund balance in the general fund was a positive $217,929. And the end of year fund balance is roughly $2.9 million. And we'll do some further analysis on that fund balance on subsequent slides. So again, there's a lot of information on this slide, but it just shows where your results came in compared to what you had budgeted in your final budget. So I promised I would do some analysis on your fund balance. This next slide, just a little background on what a positive fund balance can do. It helps with your bond rating when you go for bonds, produces income. You know, the, the larger your cash balance, obviously the larger investment income that you can get. And then it's, it's a nice cushion for when you have unexpected expenditures, repairs and maintenance, things that you, you didn't plan to have but come up in all organizations. These are the various fund balance categories and, and just some definitions on what each of the various categories are. Here is your fund balances within the general fund. So that budget to actual was the total. This is the breakdown of that total within your general fund and the change from prior year to the current year. The top is non-spendable amounts. Those are non-spendable in form, typically related to amounts you have prepaid or inventories. The next ones that are all restricted, all the way to the bottom except the unassigned, those are restrictions that the state of Minnesota has placed on certain funding sources they have provided to you and have to be spent on those specific purposes. And then the unassigned is just what's left afterwards. So once you've identified you're non-spendable and all your restrictions, then the unassigned is what's left. And the unassigned is what we typically do our analysis on. So this is just those same fund balances in a little bit different format and gives you 10-year history of the various fund balances and their categories. What we do for our analysis is we take your unassigned fund balance and divide it by the amount of expenditures that you had for that year to come up with a percentage. And that's actually on the next slide, so we'll get to that. But some benchmarks to compare that to, the state of Minnesota Office of the State Auditor published a guideline that they recommend approximately 35 to 50%. Take that with a grain of salt. That's for all governments. That's not specific to school districts. The GFOA is more, obviously is a national organization. They published approximately 15% as, as kind of a benchmark. You guys actually have a fund balance policy that you have created, and your policy is to strive to be between 10% and 15%. Those target amounts are 1.8 million is the 10% and 2.7 million is the 15%. So where are you at? Here is your unrestricted fund balance as of 2019, 7.9%. So you're below that 10% minimum that you have set. And the, the lines there are the two percentages that you had set, the, the 10% bottom and the 15% top. This also provides you with 15, or with 10 years of information, so you can see the trend analysis as well. The school district has other, that, all that analysis up to that point was on your general fund. School district obviously has some other funds that we wanted to provide some information on. This first one is the community service fund and the, the fund, this is just year-end fund balance for each of the 10 years presented. So you can see where that's at. Went from $138,000 in the prior year to $50,000 in the current year. The food service fund, and you can see the fund balance there. That one maintained a fund balance of $122,000 from the prior year to the current year. So no change in fund balance. The maroon line at the top is, there is actually a maximum fund balance you can have in your food service fund. So you never want to go over that or you, you would lose those funds. So we've published that maroon line so you can see where you're at compared to that max that, that you would be able to, to get to. And that max is equal to three months' worth of expenditures. So whatever that calculates out to in any given year, your fund balance can't exceed that. So you're not in any danger of that now. You see, there were a few years there where you were right up against it, but you've spent that down now. And expenditures have increased since then as well. So you've got a little bit more of a cushion. You also have a debt service fund, and there's really not a lot to, to a debt service fund. A debt service fund brings in dollar amounts specific to pay off your, your debt as, as your principal and interest payments come due. And so typically, what we see in a debt service fund is a, a fund balance of, you know, a smaller fund balance that remains fairly consistent over time. The 2011 just relates to timing. You refunded some bonds back in 2011 and you had received, when you have a refunding, you receive proceeds for the refunding before year end, and then you made the payment to refund those bonds after year end. So those funds were just sitting in your bank account as of June 30th, but then were paid back. So that's why there was such a large balance in that one year. And that is actually the last slide. So I would open it up to any questions or comments or anything you guys want to discuss?
I guess my only question, and maybe Brian can answer. The year-end fund deficit in the community service fund, why did we see such a significant drop between 18 and 19?
So the biggest change where we've got reserved, when you, when you look at the larger one, the booklet, you'll see that we, we have quite a carryover. We do well in ECFE in comparison. One thing we're doing between the general fund and Fund IV is charging off more into Fund IV for community ed. Because remember, like Tracy's position in particular is partly funded in Fund I and then partly in Fund IV. So we can choose how much of that is going to go in either one of them. The, the one that's really restricted the most, that we do really well with, is our early childhood. It, it can vary. It's like Fund II. Both Fund II and Fund IV, we can decide how much we want to charge off into those particular funds. A lot of times, if Fund II or Fund IV are going in the red, you know, you can, you can move money from the general fund, but you can't move it back the other way. So a lot of times, you wait to find out, all right, how are those two funds doing? And then we figure out, okay, how much do we want to charge off? You know, one of the components that you see in there is we have an elected to do a particular percent on indirect cost rates. You know, again, there's things we can, we can choose to do accounting-wise that we don't. You know, one of the biggest ones for this report and for me is, of course, that one on the unrestricted fund balance. And we've talked about that one. You know, it's, that's, the two most important ones to me are, are the unrestricted. And then when I look at those reserved, you know, how much is in the reserve for capital and all those other ones? Because when we have to go buy more things and we don't have enough in capital, what do we, what do we do? We go into our unreserved. And, because we can always use that. And so when we talk about negotiations and what else not, that goes back to, you can't keep bringing in 2% increases and giving out threes. And it isn't a shock that as our student growth capped out in 14, and you start looking at how much we have in the reserves, that's right in that, our unreserved hits right in that same timing that we could do those increases, those raises, as we had a lot more kids coming in and as we're stagnating on our numbers.
Circling back on, on that community service, I had a couple of notes here too, and you're exactly right. Salaries, there was an increase in salaries and an increase in transportation. And kind of like Brian said, when, when employees have roles in multiple funds, you can allocate their salaries to those various funds. And actually, the region is, is very good about helping with the coding and the accounting of that. So that's what I had for notes on the community service fund.
A lot of these restricted ones that you notice, we'll be utilizing some of these funds for the project with the vote goes. If the vote goes positive on Tuesday- funds with the project if the vote goes. If the vote goes positive on Tuesday, the Safe Schools, Prime Eleven, you know, we've got good funds in there. We've got $300,000. Long-term facility maintenance, 300. We need to keep that in there, because remember, we're going to be decreasing the amount of money that we're going to have coming in each of the next 10 years in that LTFM. So it's nice to have that money there. And again, health and safety, now we've zeroed that, an operating cap. And then look at the Gift Intelligence. We talk about the interventionists and all those things we can do. There's some good chunks of money that's available for some of this program increases for the kids. So it's weird when, of all the years that I've been involved, when I saw that, what, the overall for all of the funds on $20 million came down to a $500 difference?
$595.
$20 million total spent. And the expenditures and the revenue was $500 difference.
That's crazy.
It's been, it is absolutely crazy.
You spent $595 more than you probably had.
Oh, God. That's just crazy.
Almost broke even. That last expenditure in 2019, it could have been, it could have been zero.
It could have been in the black. That's good. That's pretty darn close, though. That's pretty good.
It's crazy.
Pretty good.
Yeah. Do there any other school districts that have been that close?
I don't think I've ever seen it that close. And I have a lot smaller school districts too, where it would maybe be a little easier to get right at the break even, but yeah. No, that's, you almost look at it and go, huh, is this, is there a fourth area here? What's going on? But no, there's not.
All right. Did anybody have any questions?
Before I finish up, I do want to thank Eric. Transition years are always very difficult. And for us to be reporting, it's not even November yet, and we're already reporting the final audit to you. And I have a number of school districts where we're not that far along yet. So that's just a testament to his hard work. And we, you know, we had a lot of questions and a lot of informational requests, and he was able to provide everything.
Thank you.
So just want to acknowledge and thank him for all of that.
Awesome.
Thanks, Eric.
That's wonderful.
Well, let's, can you let Cindy know that there was a clean?
Yes.
Shannon, you worked it for a while longer than that.
We'll keep you around. All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Thanks for waiting.
All right. So 9.1, this is the, I'm looking for a motion to approve the audit as presented.
Move.
Motion by David. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. And I've already asked about questions, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This is 9.2. This is about the snow removal at each of the sites.
So I will, there's two pages for each person. And thanks to Tracy for getting these printouts for me, because I called James and said, where are they? And he goes, oops. So these are pretty much hot off the press. So these are the rates, and again, it's the rates for the equipment. As I was talking with Ronnie earlier and then Raleigh earlier, remember, this isn't, you're not committing to any particular dollar amount, total costs. You know, we will decide what things we can do now that we've added personnel. OLEX is actually locking in for two years. So, I mean, recommendation I would make, we've had Hanson's do the Dilworth, want OLEX do the Glenon site. My recommendation, after talking to James, we've had very good communication with both vendors, to continue with both of them and to lock this in for two years, because again, we can control what equipment we're going to utilize. As we were talking earlier at the Dilworth site in particular, really the only thing that we have, Huggins do, over there is the parking lot itself. We have not been able to do as good of a job as we really should do regarding the sidewalks all along fourth. So all the kids that have to be walking down fourth are going through snow a lot of times. So having that equipment there now and knowing the fact that we have two assistants working with James, they better be able to keep up the sidewalks and all of that at both sites.
Then you don't have to get those phone calls from me going, hey!
Well, and they're legitimate phone calls.
It's sad, but I think they're kind of excited about the snow now that they have the equipment they have.
Then who knows where we're at?
But I am happy for, you know, the communities that we should be able, there's no excuse that we can't maintain what needs to take place. So I would recommend locking in for two years.
I'd like to see that for two years. That's...
So just...
Yes.
You go with two different companies and they provide the same services, or are they, like, I'm just...
They have different equipment. You'll notice that they've got different equipment that they use based on how much snow we have that comes down. A lot of times we've got the big storms. They've got to come out with different equipment, of course, because there's no way they can keep up with it. This site has a ton, you know, has a lot more needs, because it just has that many more cubic feet to have to maintain. So what they're locking in for us is, as they have to go with the bigger equipment, we can see what the rates are, if we've got to move snow out of the lots and what else not. You can see the costs for that. You can see what the costs are when they have to come in and put in for standing and what else not for. So we have the rates for both of them to do all those services.
Right. And plus, you have to remember, both sites need to be done by a certain time.
And they're really good about that.
Yeah.
They truly are. And I can say that for a fact. I know, I have Huggins do my driveway, and so I know exactly when they're coming over to the school, because on their way, they come over and do my driveway, so I can go out and check the roads at four. So they're really, really, really good about it. I have not had one complaint about them not showing up in the whole time I've been here.
I'll make a motion for OLEX as a snow removal vendor, for the Glenon site in Huggins as a snow removal vendor for the Dilworth site.
Do we need to put in here the two years?
I think you should if you want to lock it in. It's up to you if you want that. We know that we've got, we've got rates that OLEX will lock in for two years.
Was it expressed to Huggins that they would do two years?
No, but I'll lock it in, we'll lock it in with them for two years.
Okay, so let's rate this...
And because we'll get a new update from them, showing you for two years.
So we're going to approve OLEX as the snow removal vendor for the Glenon site for two years, and Huggins as a snow removal vendor for the Dilworth site for one year, pending you come back to us and tell us they change. Is that fine?
We can get it for the second year.
That sound good?
Yep. Okay. So there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Raleigh. Everyone comfortable with that decision? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 9.3, this is the non-certified contract for Kimberly McDonald, starting tomorrow. So, is this special ed? Again, this is one of Marianne's hires.
Yep. And I believe this one is at the high school, if I remember. It's the revolving door.
Yep. And a motion. Motion by Laura. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by David. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 9.4, the community ed annual report.
And... Let's see what's out. So that's gone through the community ed, who's on the community ed committee?
I am.
Okay, so they... So I think you should table it then.
I think so, too.
Because if that hasn't gone there, we've got to have that. I think you want to make sure the community ed...
Yeah. Yeah, because I wasn't at anything that we...
I know she's had signatures from, but yeah. No, I would table it.
Okay. Make a motion to table, and I'll second.
Move. So move.
Okay, so, any questions on that? We'll just table that. Okay, all those in favor table, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
That way we can make sure it gets sent out to you in advance.
Yeah. I didn't see anything, so I didn't read that.
Yeah, I didn't.
Yeah.
Okay. So moving on to 10.1, this is just saying that the fiscal personnel is 5:00 the next meeting, which is the 12th, and it's also here, followed by the regular school board meeting. Is there not an operations meeting tomorrow after?
No, there isn't. And the 5:00 meeting is when we would probably have the fiscal and that committee just go over some of the canvassing, the early canvassing, because that will take place on the 12th, the regular board meeting. I would think we would probably put that to that committee to give them all that.
Okay.
I guess the only thing I had for operations was the snow, and most of that got answered. I just, I remember that I thought we had a snow bucket for the skid steer on the, when we purchased it. And all they've got is a heavy material bucket, so we really don't have a snow, it's a big bucket, but it's not a snow bucket.
Yeah.
It's, that thing has got a lot of horsepower. So it's made for dirt, sand, that kind of stuff. A snow bucket would be this tall. This one is this tall. So I swear that we had it on there, but I tried to go back and find it, and I couldn't find it anyway. So I don't know if we need to think about getting a snow bucket for it. You can get them anywhere. But that's the only thing I had as far as operations. The rest of it, we talked about it, we got answered in the meeting.
One thing we could, we could, in particular, now that we know the only thing, because really the only thing Huggins has to do is that lot. And, you know, in comparison, the bills here are definitely bigger. It's just a much bigger of an area. There's no way around it.
Right.
And last year, of course, we had, we, which was a good thing in the spring, we had a bunch of the snow removed from where they had stored it, piled it up, because it was causing such havoc with the playground area, the melting and all of that. So we had to move it over to the, close over to where you're at. So...
So as far as if, you know, if there's a need for that bucket later on, that'd just go to the operations committee?
Yeah, I just think, like you say, I went over and I looked, and there's one bucket. It's a big bucket, but for that size unit, that's not a snow bucket.
Let's just see how this winter goes, and then if the need arises, bring it forward.
They're not that expensive. But I have, with a skid steer the same size, actually a little bit smaller, I could go with an eight-foot bucket. This one here's got 20 more, 15 more horsepower than the one I had. So I'm thinking you'd probably have a 102, which is...
Well, you know, and things can change so drastically based on, if the vote goes through positive, of course, then we don't have the same parking lots and those type of issues. Well, then we may have to redo some things.
Okay. And so, speaking of that, so just a reminder that if anybody is interested and able to come, Boulder Tab House, starting at 7:30. I have church commitments at 8:30, so I will be after that stopping in. So we have to be out of there at 9:45, because the news comes on at 10, and that's kind of like the last...
And they'll be, they just close at 10.
Oh, they close at 10, that's why. Okay.
But I'm sure if it's positive, we'll be...
Okay. Okay. So that's, anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, it is 6:34.